I'm going to call the meeting to order six forty five. Our meeting is currently being recorded by Norton Media. Has anyone else recording the meeting? Please identify yourselves. Okay, pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God and in this law. And with grace to our all.
All right, has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from February twenty sixth meeting?
Yes.
Questions, comments? Continue motion to approve meetings February sixth, twenty sixth.
Second.
All's in favor?
Hi.
What's your one?
Warrants, Mrs. Cohen?
I have reviewed and approved warrants that were presented to me at the February twenty sixth school committee meeting. The total amount approved was six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, fifty-nine, fifty-nine dollars and one cent. I wish to add this into the public record.
Thank you. Any questions? Student representatives. Gentlemen.
Hello.
How's it going?
Good.
How are you?
Good. The high school is planning to participate in the national school walkout on Wednesday at ten a.m. Also, Julia Palin and Bella Petrosevich represented Norton in Massachusetts this past weekend at the National Track and Field Meet in New York City. Also, the National Honor Society is holding its annual senior senior prom this Wednesday after school, if the weather allows it. Also, Muwahabia, the Math Honor Society, is holding its annual tie day event this Wednesday. Also, the Science Honor Society is visiting the LGM this Friday to give a lesson to third graders on tornadoes and do a little interactive activity.
On March seventh, our best buddies group sponsored the Spread the Word to End the Word campaign, which is an educational campaign to educate people of the harmful effects of using the R-word. So some of our students created a video and at lunch as we had, students signed a banner, taking a pledge to not use that word. On the twenty-first, we'll also be sponsoring a Down to the Ground Awareness Day, and I think it's usually like a crazy sock day or whatever, to spread awareness for that. And then this past weekend, we had about twenty-five students compete at a decade state competition, in which six placed in the top ten, and three of us will be going to the international competition, or three of us qualified for the national competition in Atlanta, and it'll be taking three more students for each of our academies.
And there was some sort of social bond between you? Can you tell us about that, Bobby?
Sure. I'm a fan.
Yay!
Good job.
Good job, Bobby!
You have to do your own point every time.
So I have to just say, the campaign that you did, I'm so glad that Dr. Baddeh emailed us privately that link, because I watched it and cried like a baby. It was awesome what you guys did. I'm proud of you and everyone else that was involved. It was awesome. Nice job. And I text your mother.
I do think it, you know, it's one of those things where you sit as the superintendent, and I'm not the principal, but you sit and you watch what these kids are doing to make sure that kids feel, as per our prior discussions, that kids feel wanted, they feel that they're part of the culture, included in the culture. I think it doesn't come from anybody better than the teenagers that are involved with students. It really doesn't. We can talk about it as adults until we're whatever, and it's never going to be as meaningful as a peer. Kudos to...
To their level.
Yeah, and kudos to Bobby, not only you, and I know all your peers you're working with, but I know you're spending a lot of time in making this happen and kicking it up to the next level. And some people might say it's a lot of work. I think you say it's just something that you believe in, so thank you for doing it. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? All right, moving on to the Norton High School senior class trip.
My name is Rachel Pila, and I am one of the Class of Two Thousand Eighteen Involved
You can have a seat, you don't have to stand in front of her.
And we would like to have you to take the seniors to Canterbury Lake Park this year, just to give them some more options, give them a different feeling. I know the math department needs to take some of the six flags, so we're looking for something a little bit different. It's actually about twenty minutes closer, I think, but I'm safe, so.
So the trip is to New Hampshire, and so that requires school committee approval because of liability and everything else that goes on. I'm recommending that we move it to Canterbury Lake Park in New Hampshire for the Class of Two Thousand Eighteen's class trip.
And that's on May thirty-first.
Any questions? All right, motion to approve the field trip to Canterbury Lake in New Hampshire.
Approve.
Second.
Second.
All's in favor?
Hi. Same here. Motion to approve.
We knew what you meant. It's been a while.
All right.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Can I just say, I'm so glad Mrs. O'Neil brought that up, because I was going to have to, as a step or advisor, recognize Bobby, it's no small feat to beat out probably forty other kids in your county, more even, first in the entire state of Massachusetts.
That's awesome.
Good job, Bob.
Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, student academic support.
So briefly, I'm going to table this item, but I just want to let you know that I am working on a plan through a group of teachers and Jen's office on how to change programming in toward to upfront needs for students in K to three. So just a big picture item, it does require expenditure, and of course, you know what expenditure I would be looking to utilize, which would be school choice funds and the proactive ways, just like we've done with technology. So I'll bring that to the, to the next meeting as well. Thank you.
Do you mind, school choice, we're talking about?
Yeah, so you would ask for a couple of pieces of information. One of them was emailed to you earlier, in terms of the line items expenditures. I really do think it's interesting to note that the school choice funds since FY fifteen have brought in one million eighty-seven thousand and nine dollars. We've expended eight-hundred-and-fifty-four plus, we haven't covered money that's not on here yet. But as you see from the line items, these are anything from one-time purchases of books, professional development, full-day kindergarten teachers' costs, technology costs, trying to think, and some of the, you have a line item in front of you. We wouldn't have eight-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars in the last four fiscal years of this stuff if it wasn't for these funds. And I think it's really important to recognize that comes from on the second sheet that you have in the original packet, which is June of fifteen, we had thirteen school choice students, June of sixteen, we had forty-one, June of seventeen, we had fifty-five, and as of March of eighteen, this year, we have ninety students in our school choice program. As you can see, the communities have actually grown, including some communities that maybe you wouldn't expect. Some of that has to do with faculty members, and when they live, you actually, you have a couple of...
That was my question, some of the kind of far away, I mean, that's faculty.
Yeah, so, you know...
As much as I love my kids, a forty would even ride to Weymouth, wouldn't be happening.
Right, exactly. And that has to do with faculty members who have chosen to brand under the school choice program like I have and others, their children to the districts, so we're at ninety, and the applications are already coming in.
And when we voted in the more kindergarten numbers, what is that, what is that total for open seats or for available?
We voted it, I think it was at, I think it was fifteen for next year, but again, we've also had some discussions about that fifteen and what that would mean to class size, and that's the one thing we're going to keep an eye on.
So what would our total school choice seats be?
It would be, if I remember correctly, it's in terms of the original vote.
We said kindergarten and grade one at fifteen, grades two through five at ten, and grades six through ten, no cap.
So it's seventy within the cap, and then six through ten, no cap. So there's a potential for seventy more students to come, or more. So that's, that's how we're looking, looking at it. And our enrollment right now in kindergarten is, just because of births, is pretty low. So we're keeping an eye on that and what that means for class sizes and the impact on that.
How do you advertise this? How are families from, I mean, I know you said some of them are staff members, but if we just look at Dyden Mahobeth, the six, is that, you know, all staff? Are you advertising?
No, it's a combination. We advertise in local newspapers, as well as online, social media, in terms of everything from Twitter account, Facebook account. You know, it's a catch-twenty-two, because what I'm doing is I'm saying that we're as competitive as anyone else, we believe, number one. But number two, remember that I'm also taking students from another district in the same way that students take students from us. So it's a little bit of a, you know, you try to be professional, you know, I don't have a TV ad out there, yet. You know, I don't have a bus in downtown somewhere, yet, because I really feel we have a great product, and I mean, there's no more great product than being the superintendent who decides to send their own child to that district. So I'll leave it at that.
I also think we have a lot of choice families that are already enrolled and really going and telling their friends of what a great experience they've had to the quarter month has really helped as well.
I think it's really, really, I think it's, you know, we have some naysayers, both internally and externally, about school choice, and so, you know, one of my things is what would happen to one-to-one technology right now in our district in four through ten? It wouldn't be happening. It would not be there. What would happen to some of our reading series that we have in classrooms? They would not be there.
Full decay.
Full decay, would not be here. So to the naysayers, I say, you know, I guess job security must be a nice thing, but besides that, there really isn't.
Well, there's got to be something right to it, because so many districts are kind of jumping on the bandwagon.
Every district around us is now voting school choice, or considering voting school choice.
Maybe for all of those naysayers, you can have them go to any other district and see what they're doing, because I think we're kind of lucky that we were ahead of the curve and that we do have a great product.
Right. It's important.
Do we have any idea if we have school choice students going forward?
Sure, we have, I don't have the number in front of me, but yeah, we have, and I think what's important, you just said some, we've always had school choice kids going out. We're now, at minimum, bringing in the revenue that at minimum, not only equals that, but adds to that. It's way above. We have more, except for the charter, but we know that that's under a whole different financial formula and a whole different process.
This year, we're sending seventeen, last year was fifteen point four, year before that was nineteen, goes all the way back to four.
Middle of the year. Transition. They progress.
They just get the head on the monitor.
So we, we think that it's the right approach. We think we have to keep an eye on it with class sizes. You know, we, we think that there are areas where we can improve the way that we are providing it. I mean, I've had some general discussions with you about when is the right time to hire a teacher, because the class size becomes too much, and we don't want to place a burden on that. But I think the discussion on class size also comes down to, you know, what is the right class size? I think sometimes around me, I hear things like anything higher than eighteen or twenty, so we're at twenty-four, while schools around us are twenty-eight to thirty, and I'm hearing, you know, people worried about that. I'm worried too, because of the type of student that are needing these SEL supports, which are our general K to twelve population, not us school choice kids that are coming in. That doesn't mean we don't have a school choice child that's not our NIP. And the other part of it becomes, why are parents choosing, and we have yet to survey our parents in school choice, we're about to be doing that in the near future and saying, why Norton, because you have so many other options? Why did you choose us? Are you happy with us? What are we not doing? In the same way that we've asked our regular parents that information, and we'll do that, you know, I'm just not going to do choice, I'm just going to make sure that our choice parents' information is collected separately from K twelve.
This is a rehash of something I said before, but so the class size issue, there's actually two ways to look at it, right? You can look at it from the standpoint of, well, we don't want to get the class too big, or you can look at it from the standpoint of, well, if the class is getting to a certain size, what we actually want to do now is push for as many kids as we can for that grade.
Because...
We want to grow it so we can bump into a new teacher.
Right.
So I would encourage you to do that, because it's still, I hate to break down, but it's still profitable.
And nine students, basically, nine, ten students in one grade really allows for us to have a discussion to say, instead of having twenty-five kids in every class, we can now have nineteen kids in every class, and our kids get the benefit. And by our kids, I mean all of our kids, both the child who's choicing in and the child who is born and bred in Norton.
Problem there is now you're not getting around to further things like the seven books you're currently...
Correct, so, so, so the question becomes, one of the things that we've done a decent job of is trying to get rid of the one-time purchases as much as possible. Sometimes what happens is because of enrollment, we need a new this, or we need a new that. But in general, in this area, except for cities, if you're a suburb, you're looking at flatlining your enrollment for the next decade, or going down. So, you know, that's the reason why it's such a competitor. You also have to remember that we now have families born into the charter movement, into the choice movement. You know, choice before was you go to the vote, or the aggie, or you go to the private school, that was, you couldn't choice it between districts. So now you can. So the question becomes, how aggressive are we being, if you will, or how clear are we being? I mean, we don't have a glossy like our competitors, some of our competitors do in the charter school, the vote school, the Aggie school, and so on. Maybe that's something we should look upon. We talked about marketing and public relations, we just don't have the time to do it. We do snippets of it, but think about what this would look like if we were really doing an advertising push, it'd look a little differently.
Okay. Any other questions? Moving on, athletic booster information.
For your information only, not for the purposes of trying to make any decisions going forward. We did in fact ask the boosters for options of what they would like. And basically, what you have is one program, hockey, whose option, well, let me rephrase this, there are three options. Option number one, a booster, the current funds that the boost, each of the boosters has in the line item would be, would stay in that line item until it ran out, and then all funds would be in one line item, all sports together. Second option is one booster with one governing body, but individual line items. This is very much like the presentation that we had from Ole Miss Chester, except that there would be kind of a, if you will, a charge back into the line items that would go under the big one, and then our, our big one booster would be doing like the major fundraiser, and then the boosters would be doing their individual fundraising, we'd have to define that. And then option three is keep as it is, but provide school committee with non-for-profit status, which is what we've told them they have to have by June thirtieth. So the breakdown that you have is, you can read it one of two ways. One program, hockey, has said they prefer option one, but they would be willing to also go with option two. So what I did is I split that as a vote. So really, option one, you have two and a half votes, option two, you have seven and a half votes, and option three, you have five, or you can read it as three, seven, five, one way or the other. I split the hockey either as going half in each way, or you can say it's three for number one, so those are people who want one booster, that would be currently girls' volleyball, girls' soccer, and hockey. And then option two, you have seven, which would be winter track, boys and girls, spring track, boys and girls, cross-country, boys and girls, boys soccer, boys and girls lacrosse, and golf, and gymnastics. And then option three, you have first and ten foundation for football, you have softball, and you have cheering and wrestling. So I guess I missed one. That's four.
That's four.
Sorry. Take that back. I must have counted one twice. Yeah, I must have counted one twice, because that's only four, right? One, two, three, four. Take that back.
There's no basketball. Are you right?
If, if it's not here, I didn't receive the information.
That's the law.
Simple. Okay? And I, I think I've done enough after.
So they've done nothing with what we've asked them to do?
I don't know that to be true. All I know is not reported here, so that means I don't have an answer.
What's our deadline for the, for being non-profit?
June thirtieth.
Of this year.
Of this year.
Will the decision be made at that point?
Well, what's happening now is that some of the groups are saying, you know, I'm filing for my status because I'm not sure where we're going, or should I file for my status because I'm still waiting to hear. I think they're looking for a little bit of direction in terms of what do we want to do next. And I know that some of you had some thoughts of this, because we've talked. I think the biggest issue here is that you're split. You know, option two looks like it has the most, but then you still have seven other groups that are saying no, and potentially others that haven't even come in.
How do you have seven other groups that say no?
Well, you have, you have, no, I talked about three and four, so three and one, four and three is seven, plus seven has chosen two.
Well, but the three, the three are okay with the one booster.
Right.
Right.
Altogether, so I wouldn't count them as a no. I think they're, they're an all-in, just want to go to one booster.
So the two programs that are highly, you know, if you will, stuck to option three is wrestling and first and ten foundation, which probably, as separate organizations, probably next to hockey, are one, two, and three in fundraising. Hockey, because at one point it had to fully fund it, now it has other responsibilities, but football and wrestling. Wrestling is, I mean, I don't know if any of you have gone to a wrestling meet, it's a life, it's a lifelong affair, the entire day, it's an eight-hour day, because it's squads and tries and all that stuff. And so they make their food out with having a great presentation of food and product and stuff that they can sell to all the other kids and parents that show up for that first day event. So clearly, I can understand why they said three. Same thing with football, you know, very clear-cut, it's a foundation that's been around probably the longest of them all. So the question becomes, how do we, you know, how do we move forward? I'm not asking for an answer tonight, I just think we need to have this in our brain.
So how do you move forward when there are sort of potentially three, two, three, or four programs, maybe one that we can think of off the top of our head that's not even listed here? How do we move forward and kind of just leave them out, and then the rest kind of come, it just feels...
Well, you know, there is, there are ideas that we can present to them and say, let's start here, plan A, B, and C, if you will. I think, I think the issue here is, is you may have to come to the situation of playing hardball, where you say, no, this is the way we're going to be doing it going forward. The other part of it is that you do have parents very involved now in middle school sports that aren't yet at the high school. You know, and what are their thinking about this process? Do they think of governing body of one, one is better than multiple? Everybody wants to fundraise and make sure that the money goes back to that group. I get that. But clearly, we heard from organizations from other towns, Hulley, that that's not the way they do it. They're working together as a group and not individually, and as we know, that's been a constant theme that I've had an issue with, which is that, you know, all for one and nothing for anyone is not something that...
All for one and one for me.
Yeah, exactly. And it's, and not, again, I'm not trying to be negative, because they do almost everything that they can to make sure that the kids are getting what they need and maybe even some beyond that. But I do think that some, at minimum, if this doesn't go anywhere, then we're saying, I'm sorry, you have to be registered, you cannot use our name, you cannot use our, you know, our buildings for your own, this and that. I think then the second part is, do we take a look at saying, well, you know what? That's fine. Do I want to be independent? You're all registered non-for-profits, but we're still going to have some type of an organized booster that is, is going to be tackling big businesses and the businesses that potentially could. I just recently proposed to a local business a request for an amount of money to offset not increasing fees going forward for sports. Their amount of money that they would donate would, my request was forty thousand dollars, so that the fees would not go up. And, you know, that's what the money would be earmarked to, to take care of the fees. I think a lot of people like that idea. I would like to go beyond that and say, how do we scale back some of these fees? Because three fifty is a hefty fee. And we can't...
Is your suggestion that if you do like, if you do kind of target these larger organizations that a sort of booster group then couldn't?
What I'm suggesting is that that's a potential idea, yeah, that we would go back to the idea that fundraising as a sports booster is about the team getting to heaven and having a power loss.
Actually, what we may find is that these groups who stay independent may not be as successful moving forward as they have been because...
My definition won't be. I mean, I'm, I'm still, I'm not following through these on the logic, to be honest with you. I don't understand what the logic is on.
I think the logic is control. And again, I don't want to sound like I'm being anti, it's just, I think that's what it is. We raise this amount of money, we spend a lot of time doing that.
Yeah, my rebuttal to that is...
We spend long days doing it, so therefore it should be ours.
And we're well-ordered.
So my rebuttal to that is, my rebuttal to that is that under option two, you will still do exactly that. You will control all your money, except for the small piece that you put into the main booster. That piece will go back to either deferring or mitigating raises in fees, or decreasing the fees of your own athletes. So it's all, all of your money is basically going back in there, and then you will be able to take advantage of larger corporate dollars. It's, your, your option is to have, let's say you raise fifty thousand and the main booster raises whatever, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So you can have your fifty thousand and a piece of two-fifty, or you can have just your fifty. Just fifty is less. There is no mathematical argument that is not. I don't understand the logic.
Yeah, I think, I think a couple of different things that are concerning.
Any, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but one other thing is, is the idea of the control. I mean, I thought we were fairly clear that you will not remain an independent booster. Things are going to have to go through the front office now. You can't just go out and say, well, we're going to do this with our money and that's that. It has to come through the front office, and has to get approved. I, I, I'm not sure that everybody understands what, what's transpiring here.
Right. I, I think that the issue that has been my stickling point with the boosters has been, what are we fundraising for? That's going to continue to be my question. If we're fundraising for the purposes of a banquet and all of that, I understand that, right? I get it, there's bills to be paid, food to be purchased, awards to be provided. But there's other things that take place that I'm not sure should be. I mentioned the, the issue of the scholarships that I have concern with, because I believe that when you're going to raise money, that's going to potentially go to these student athletes only within your sport, I think you clearly have to articulate that to the people you're fundraising from. That's number one. Number two, I think you have to be an absolute registered non-for-profit, because the number one question we get at my office is, is this group for real? Is this, is this something that, you know, I can be supporting? Now, most of this is relationships that I don't have with people, it's a booster parent who knows the, knows the owner. But at some point, what should fundraising be about? Is it about team and let's go, let's fundraise for this because we all need new nets? Or is it about, we're going to give out scholarship money? And I have some, you know, some real thoughts that that's not the way we should be doing business. The second part becomes, what are the priorities of what we purchase? You know, I'm a stickler for, if you're going to fundraise and you're offsetting the cost of the sport, whatever that is, is it for the needs and necessity of the thirty-six players on the soccer team, JV and varsity, or is it for the needs of only the varsities getting the blame? And we, you know, we're all fundraising so that X can get, I think those are the things that have to be clearly articulated. What are we purchasing? I mean, we, I've gotten into more trouble and gotten some really angry people with me since I've been here about, why does it seem that this sport always gets new uniforms every three years, while I've expended zero in my operating budget for that sport? But yet, perception-wise, it looks like I'm the one who's purchasing, and by me, I mean the district, is purchasing that uniform. No, it's that booster group who went out and said, here's seven grand for that uniform that everybody's going to get, versus football helmets that I feel I have a direct responsibility to deal with, because it is a safety protocol, in terms of concussion protocols and so on and so forth. They can't just be any, anything off the, so we have to, we get it, because I think we're wasting money. And by wasting, I don't mean that the money's bad money, I mean, we could potentially do better. For example, I'm charging the boosters a custodial cost to use the cafeteria. So I'm hurting the very people, I'm going to, I'm going to charge them three-hundred-and-fifty dollars for, for a custodian for a few hours, for the same money that they're out there funding because we need it for the sport? That makes no sense to me. This is the same discussion, by the way, we've had with National Honor Society and fees and all that stuff.
So I propose something to Gerald and Charity, and if I have the exact details of what I propose, forgive me, but essentially, it was that we would go to option two, but do it on a staggered basis. So in other words, I think next year would have been kind of the, the pre-bi year, you You can join it next year. And then after that, if you're not part of it, you have to go a full year not enjoying the benefits of it to, to explain it. So if, if next year, let's say softball, just picking people randomly, softball says we're going to go into it and boys soccer says we're not. Okay, so softball is in it, boys soccer is not, then after that, boys soccer does not have to be part of it. They don't have to, they don't have to enjoy any extra money. They can enjoy only the, the small amount they can raise and not the large amount that we raise. After that, if they want to join it, they have to have a one-year moratorium on being able to use any money that comes out of that. In other words, you can't come in and say, hey, those guys, you know, Bob Kraft's putting a soccer field for these guys, we don't want to be part of that. Well, you can't be, sorry, not for a year. You can't, you can't ride our coattails. So it, it basically incentivizes people to, to join the one booster with like the, you know, I don't want to call it mini boosters underneath it, but, but with people still having some momentum of control of their own money as well. And it punishes people who say, well, we're not going to do that until we see the success and then we want to jump on the success. So...
Well, I know that the chair, that somebody came to me from chair and what their concern is, is that they are a small group and they raise money and they're barely making it. So they're, they're, in their minds, they're thinking, well, if the other big one that everybody talks about doesn't happen because it's not a guarantee, now we're still busting and we're trying to make this money and we still have to give a portion when we're barely making it.
But the portion goes right back to them.
I think they were still going to add to them. The portion goes back to them.
It goes right back to them.
Yeah, but not, not from what they said.
They don't, they don't understand, they don't understand the logic. It goes right back to them. That's, that's why I don't understand the logic of the logic.
The portion that they're putting in goes back to them, to that specific group. That's why I don't think they're...
Well, I thought what they said in the meeting was, there's a percentage that runs to the large booster that then we use to do everybody.
They pay rights to a large booster, but then under, under the scenario, a large booster would pay them back pro rata to mitigate the fees. So it's, everybody, everybody has to pay, what, 15%?
The whole idea of the big groups has been two parts. The first part is, if we can collectively, collectively take 29 or whatever it is sports and have one group, we should be able to fund six figures in athletics within making, making connections to all the different community sponsors and outside of the community sponsors that could potentially want to give to something like that. So that's one. The second part is, how do we prioritize making sure that those funds are earmarked to make sure that fees for students are maintained or actually go down? Because you've got to remember, fees every single year are going to go, excuse me, the cost of athletics every single year is going to go up 3%, 4%, 5% on a half million dollar budget. Right? So, you know, you're, you're, you're going to go up $20,000, let's say, for the sake of argument, $30,000 or more every single year. And you're trying to say, okay, well, guess what? No more than 350 because we're going to, we're going to take this money from over here and offset that cost. And, and the issue is that that's just not something folks seem to want to do.
Yeah, I don't understand that because in Option Two, the least you can possibly get is what you raise.
Right.
That's the least you can get.
Right.
By, by definition, by math, that's the least you can get.
Right.
And so I'm...
Your money is still yours.
Yeah.
But you're collectively also coming together for the purposes of, let's say we decide that we're going to do an athletic department golf tournament. Everybody participates. Should be easy to get the minimum 130 or whatever you need to do one of those. And everybody's paying their money and that we're fundraising, we're doing all that stuff. That money goes right into the big part of money.
Yeah.
Right? Now, if a team comes forward and they're fundraising their own stuff that they're doing and they want to use that money for X, Y, and Z, they can still do that. All we're saying is that there needs to be some type of pay-in to the booster because we're going to feed that money into all the stuff that we need, which is stacked with the number one issue, fees being maintained and not increased, or maybe even go the other way.
And also the equity of what each sport is doing.
Yeah. Yeah, it places, you know, TPC is a perfect example. You folks used to have, before I was here, before Chris Moniz was here, early on with the TPC, the volunteers of all the athletic teams participating at the TPC. I've heard great stories about everything. Now we have barely none participating, or any, I should say, participating. Why? Well, it's the weekend, it takes time, it's a commitment, and they made only clear 1,200 bucks for the entire weekend.
Yeah, it wasn't worth the effort.
Right, it wasn't worth the effort, is what I was told, exactly. It was just a lot of work to, to clear 1,000 to 1,500. I think one group cleared one year, two grand as the top prize. Okay, we get it, but there's also something about that fundraising that's important. Community, team building, working together as families, working together, finding ways to do it, air marketing for a certain thing that you want. Everybody's going to get new soccer balls. Okay, great, it costs a thousand dollars. We've got to raise a thousand dollars to get new soccer balls. We don't think of it that way. And we don't have any protocol for that, which is one of the things I definitely want to put in place with the athletic director and the president. So this is, again, not a deal today, just a discussion.
Right, I think that's why if you look at Option Two, you know, you have that one big booster who targets the businesses and maybe some really big fundraising events. And then the other booster, the, you know, the mini boosters like you called it, they can do their car washes and, and whatever else they want to do. They're, they're not targeting the businesses. The businesses will be at once. You know, it, it, it just, yeah, it boggles my mind too that you're going to get more money. And I think that...
The other thing too is, is we have 29 different organizations in one school. We have other things in other schools. I mean, as a small, not me, but as a small business owner in this town, I have 35 people every year as an estimate asking me for money. Like, I would think, you know, so if I have 35 people and everybody gets 20 bucks, maybe one organization, maybe my check is a thousand bucks.
Yep, it's like the home, play, fundraise for, hold it for friends of North West Land Day. And also at the TPC, possibly we got parents and members of the school, members of the teams volunteering at the full tent during the TPC, possibly for the golf tournament.
Carolyn, did you have something?
Well, I was just going to say, for years, Foxborough has been doing a sort of combined boosters for their parent organizations. And I know Dr. Marty's, when he came, had sort of offered that as an option. And it is very overwhelming because you kind of have, from year to year, this is what I want, sort of, this is what we perceive the school to need. And we, I don't really know where that conversation ever went because I'm not part of the parent organizations any longer, but I think that there was evidence that they would raise a lot of money doing one event every year. And that was all the parent organizations in Foxborough needed to do was one sort of gala and they would sort of split it up. So one year, this school did it, the next year, this school did it, the next year, this school. So they didn't even have the pressure of every single year having to run this major fundraiser. There's really clearly evidence that pulling together and working more collaboratively can have much better results, so...
Yeah, I mean, I think another thing too is, you know, if we're looking at this list, if you have 20 different other organizations under one, you can, like, if you're doing, you know, you guys did the hoedown, that's a whole new set of people that go.
Absolutely, a lot more people.
Like, it's just, I mean, you're still not, it's still not, it's the same amount of effort, but you've expanded your community that's going to be...
So next steps, we'll, we'll be coming back to have a further discussion and potentially a vote of the school committee.
So can I just ask one last clarifying question? So the, the sports that are listed are the ones that responded, but if we, we know that there are sports that are missing, is that sort of...
They can still respond, absolutely. I mean, I don't want to keep anybody out from saying that didn't have a voice, whatever their voice is, whatever their choice is. I've had individual discussions with some of the people on this list who came to me and discussed, we're leaning to this, and they, and they actually, their vote actually came in differently because they went back and said, you know, I think this is the way to go, and the membership didn't feel that way. That's okay?
So I, I do think that if we have a deadline for the nonprofit status of June 30th, I think that we need to, you know, we're at the middle of March now. So I think we need to, I, I think there's, from what I'm hearing from feedback from people, it's, you know, is there a decision made? I think they're looking to us to just make this decision and move on.
So if we make this decision, let's say we go with Option Two because between the ones and the twos, I think the ones would be okay with two.
Right.
What would happen to the threes? They either have to do it or not, or...
They're a non-for-profit organization, I don't, that's, that's the question mark.
So...
Well, I think like what Dinesh said...
I think, I think what we want to do is, so everybody has to be non-for-profit. Even if, I think, even if we go to Option Two, I think...
Right.
All the minis have to be a non-profit, a non-profit, whatever, whatever legal terms. If, if there are people who insist on three, I mean, we can sit down with them and explain it one more time, and if they still refuse, then I say just, we'll just leave them out. As long as they're a non-for-profit, they'll, they'll go through the protocols we've instituted, what we talked about when they go through the front office, the accounts are held at, you know, with the front office.
Wasn't that kind of the carrot though, to go for two so that all the minis didn't have to go for not? That they'd be under the one big booster?
Well, so it, it was. However, the deadline is June 30th and we haven't made a decision. If, if you're not making that move already, I think you're, you find yourself way behind the eight ball. So I, if, if anybody's sitting here saying, well, we're not going to be a non-for-profit because we're hoping for this, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't rest on that. I mean, I think it's probably likely a little bit on us, but particularly, particularly the people who say, well, we want to be a three, we want to stay independent. I think football already is non-profit, right?
Yeah, football has been so.
And wrestling is...
And wrestling.
Yeah, so, so they don't really have to make that move by you.
So if we did go with Option Two, do we have to have everybody then nonprofit status? We, we wouldn't have to, correct?
So, no, you wouldn't, you, what you could do...
Because they do their car washes or whatever under the umbrella.
You could, you could have it under one umbrella with one number, with, with a very clear, you know, number for, for the entire thing that can be utilized by all of them. I think the issue here is one thing. It's called control. It's that simple. And who wants to have that fight? It's that, I'm, you know, I, I don't, I don't, this is not a hill I'm dying on. You know that phrase, right? Because whatever vote we take, whatever I recommend, there's going to be backlash to it. So we may want people to say, this is what we want. This is no different, by the way, than a prop two and a half override in this town. Okay? Let's just call it what it is. I'm not going to make any friends with that statement, but I really don't care at this point because I've spent a lot of time on it. The issue is that A, nonprofit professional, nonprofit status is required because we should not be accepting any money as an institution that doesn't come through that process or the process of a gift. Those are the only two things, right? Somebody can show up, I can show up and give you, give the school department a hundred dollar check and say, I want it for child on free reduced lunch. I can do that, it's a gift. But as an institution, having these independent groups out there fundraising and then nonprofit status, and oh, by the way, with checkbooks in people's names of them using their social security number, and, you know, I have no checks and balances in place that shows that this is legitimate money, and I'm not questioning that, I'm just saying the process to me is what needs to happen. The proposal that we put forward was to look at how people wanted to keep their individual line items. And Old Rochester was the perfect example. He then, at that meeting, said, one way to do it is you can have a charge. They don't have a charge, but we could have a charge into the big one. But every line item is still controlled by that individual booster club. But that things would be prioritized. They're raising six figures a year. Hull only has one booster. They're not only raising six figures a year, they're actually supporting academic field trips through their booster club for, for kids at, at, out different elementary levels is what they've done. So to me is, it's, it's the school committee is in a catch-22 situation because you're going to tick off somebody in your vote, whatever the way we go. The compromise is Option Two. First intent, wrestling, baseball, you can control your own line item. You know, you're part of that, your, your line item is yours, you, you have that responsibility. There's nobody taking it off the top from you. But as a group, we'd be fundraising together for the purposes of earmarking funds for fees because the fees are ridiculous, the highest in the area right now.
Yeah, I don't...
Can I ask, just to sort of clarify? So let's, we kind of mentioned that one of the things we would want to do with kind of the money that is collected for Option Two, kind of in the bigger pool of money, is to keep our fees at a certain cost. So what happens to the Option Three sports? For example, football or wrestling? Those sports go up and the other sports stay?
Yeah, you can't, you can't, you can't say, we don't want that, but then we want the benefit.
Well, and I think that, but I think that those are the clarifying points, that, that the families who potentially are going to be affected, so, you know, we're going to keep football at $350, but we're very luckily going to bring, you know, girls volleyball down to $150. That's huge. And I'm not sure if the people who are sort of the Option Three people are really maybe understanding that, that if it does come to fruition, I mean, I know we're sort of talking and, and kind of...
Well, Dinesh's example of staggering this has some, has some merit from the following, has max merit, but from the...
Lots of merit.
It has one great thing, and that is, I do not want to control how these organizations currently expend their money, but I do believe we have a right to know where that money is going.
Okay? Can we clarify that, that all the money they're raising isn't going through us? It, it will.
No, it can't.
It can't.
Not if it's...
No, if it's, if it's a one booster.
It's still, it's still an independent booster. It's still an independent booster.
I thought we agreed, I thought we agreed that the accounts would come through you guys.
They can't come through us.
I never answered that because, no, I wouldn't.
You can't, they're, they're a registered non-for-profit like they are right now with a different board.
So we're not inside, we're not...
No, well, no, we can have protocols in place. We can have protocols in place.
The account does not have to rest with us.
Correct.
There has to be a protocol because otherwise what you have is you have people going out and saying, hey, I represent more schools, I want, give me some money, and we have no control.
Correct.
The thing is with the non-profits, when they register, they have to provide financials. That's the biggest thing that we're seeing. We don't know what they're spending money on. So when they provide it to us, then we'll know, but it, it's not going to go through us, we're totally separate. Okay, if the, if the account does not rest with you, will you still be in charge of looking over the line items? Who's bringing what in? Who's bringing what out?
Well, I mean, I can. I don't have to say what... Those organizations as registered non-profits are supposed to yearly file, depending on the amount of money that they raise.
So here's, here's why, here's why I have a real issue with that. Because I don't want, and I'm telling you, this is not inconceivable, that someone in something, whether it be a parent organization or whatever, is taking money out of these things. It, it would not be overly difficult.
So the protocol would be...
I'm telling you, that can happen.
So, so it can, but the protocol...
There has to be some oversight of this.
The oversight is that you have a board, right? That's appointed, elected by the membership. That's going to have a president or vice president, treasurer, secretary. You can have a, you can have a fundraiser chair, whatever the offices are. You have to have protocols in place for how money is expended and or collected and or expended.
Probably, nobody does.
The problem is that right now, we have organizations that are non-for-profit registered and do take votes and do have paperwork and paper trails. But then we have other organizations that don't. And my concern is the don'ts are more right now than the do's. And then on top of that is, what are we fundraising for? Because there are people going out there, literally, my office has received the following call, why can't you guys pay for that team's jersey? Why are you asking, why are they asking me money? And I say, I have no idea what you're talking about. What do you mean with fundraising for a jersey? You know, for a uniform? I would like to have the responsibility since I've been here of saying, we have a budgetary operational fund requirement to do certain things. We shouldn't be paying one penny out of fees and or fundraising for salaries. We shouldn't. It's an awful practice. It's an awful, let me go fundraise so that my coach can get his $2,500 stipend. Really? We have an operational obligation to that. We may, we have an operational obligation to safety, transportation. But some of those in the area of transportation, we could use fees to offset transportation. We can use fees to offset the cost of uniforms. We can use fees to offset the cost of whatever, which is what we do now. It's a half a million dollar operating budget that collects 180,000 dollars in fees.
About four this year, probably over 200.
320 of it comes from the operating budget. So what we're trying to say is, these expenses go up 3%, 4%, 5% per percent, we have to do what we've done with other areas. With transportation is another example. With transportation is another example. Transportation is up 10,000. Do we add another $10,000 worth of fees to kids, or we just keep it the same and eat it in the operating budget? We eat it in the operating budget, as much as people think that we don't. Same thing with sports. So the protocols would be a brand-new, organized, registered non-for-profit with proper leadership, banking accounts, registered with the attorney general's office, so on and so forth, which then follows protocols established within its rules and regulations, including that it must file with the school committee, at least on a yearly basis, a line item of collections and expenses.
So that's your oversight.
That's the oversight.
I would prefer it be more...
To be more than once a year.
Quarterly, quarterly.
Right.
And we can offer guidance.
And we can offer guidance, however, they want us to be involved or not. And the protocol also has to include the athletic director and the building principal under that protocol, which is, so what should the expenditures go for? You know? Okay, we're not going to have one banquet. We're going to have 75 banquets. Great. What does that look like? Where are they happening? How much are we expending on these? Are we, have we decided on a per pupil cost? Or are we saying, "Spend as much as you want"? What kind of gifts do the seniors get? Do we finally decide that we're going to pay for all the awards ourselves 100% out of the operating budget, because we're going to allow the boosters to do X, Y, and Z? Do we eat the custodial costs as part of operation for using our building, because we're saying, "Please use our building and don't, don't go off-site, because it's more complicated"? Those protocols we can put into place as part of putting this together. The financials quarterly, bi-weekly, monthly, if you want. One of our organizations, the high school parent group, always sends me their stuff. Our boosters actually, parent groups have been sending me their monthlies. So they have their agenda, they have their minutes, they have how much they collected, what they expended for, and how much is left, and their votes that they've taken, which is great. We're asking these, this group to do the same, or they would be doing the same, or we're going to have 29 independent ones that is doing that.
So now I think, I may have, I may have misspoke. My civil, my original proposal to you was, I think my proposal was, actually, next year, you can, you can join the large boosters, stay many, but, but there was no fee. I think you didn't pay a fee.
That's correctly what you said.
So you didn't pay a fee the first time. So you, you were able to utilize all your money that first year.
Right.
And the second year, the fee started. But after that first year, people who said, "We don't want to join the first year," couldn't join without the one-year moratorium on, on joining any of the extra money that came in.
And we haven't even decided, the group hasn't even decided what that fee would be. Is it 1%? Is it 5%? Is it a one-time yearly fee? We don't know any of that yet.
And it doesn't matter, because we, we're going to structure it so that it goes back to the menu. Their, their money goes right back.
Correct.
In the, in the form of reduced or stabilized fees. So what I'm going to lobby for, and I know what I'm lobbying on today, is I'm going to lobby on, on option two with exactly that. People who don't want to do it, however, I would, I would say that we should make every effort possible to sit down with the ones who are against it and try and explain it one more time. Because I, I think the problem is that people don't, they're misunderstanding what it's supposed to be. I, I think they think it's one thing where we're taking a bunch of money from them and it's going to go to somebody else, and that's not what it is. I, I think there's a misunderstanding.
Okay.
So part of it is the spending of it. So there's one governing body. If the boosters for football wants to go buy, I don't know, cleats or socks, do they have to go through this governing body, get approved to go buy this? That's the kind of control they have now, where they can just go write a check and go buy something. They don't have to go through this governing body. And I think they'll take $50,000 instead of $75,000 just to have that control.
So I think, I think if we have, if we have kind of a blanket, you know, pre-approved, this type of thing, if you, if you want to buy a piece of the, whatever the required uniform is, yeah, fine. That's, you know, and that, if you want to spend your money on it, that's fine. If you want to do something else, I don't know, if you want to give scholarships out, then, you know, maybe there's, maybe there's a requirement, or there's prohibition on it, I don't know. But I think, I think it's pretty, it's pretty easy to say, you know, salaries, I think our current policy is you can't pay assistant salaries or volunteers.
Volunteers.
You can't pay volunteers' salaries. So, you know, it's, it's pretty easy to say, "Hey, here are like, you know, here are the 10 things that are already okay for you to use. You can use your money for these 10 things, and that's okay. If you want to use your money for, you know, for the expense of buying foodstuffs and drinks to sell to try and raise more money, that's okay. That's an okay use of your money."
How do, how do they get that money?
Through a governing body.
They go through the governing body and...
How do they get that money? Is there one checkbook for the big booster? Do they have to go to someone to get that check written?
Yes.
And that's, that's what they don't want to get.
But they, but they, but they have that now, right? So if I'm, if I'm the, whatever, the president of the swimming booster, gymnastics, the gymnastics boosters, and I want to, I want to get something, I don't just say, "Hey, make it happen." I have to go to the treasurer and say, "Hey, we need to issue a check for this," right? And treasurer says, "What are we, oh, yeah, foodstuffs. Okay, that's a legitimate expense."
Old Rochester, it's under $5,000 that can be expended by, or under $1,000 can be expended in that process. Anything over $1,000 needs to go to the full board.
And if you put, if you put a, you know, "Hey, listen, these are the, you know, these are the things that you don't need approval of the full board," I mean, they can structure it any way they want to structure it.
But I believe Old Rochester had two treasurers.
It's how you put your violence.
And the president could also put checks as well.
Right.
And the idea behind that is to make it as fluid and easy for that type of expenditure, because things happen at the last minute all the time, where you need another $100 for this or $200 for that. I mean, we know that. Receipt process, right? You go out, you use your own money. What's the receipt process for reimbursement, right? I don't know what it is right now. I have no idea who's cutting checks to who. I think one organized way and should be the way we do it.
Arrange a sort of, it's easy. I mean, it's, it's not that hard.
I think one thing you need to remember, though, is because, you know, we said that there was this deadline to be nonprofit by June 30th, kind of before we started having all of these conversations in the meetings.
Yeah, sure.
So you've had some boosters go out immediately and get their nonprofit status. They put money into it, time. So if, if we go to option two and say, "We're just going to have this one nonprofit, and everyone's going to work underneath it," you know, then you've got people who went out and already, you know, put money into getting their nonprofit.
How much money was it?
I think, I think what I did, it was $500 I ended up putting in, but mine was years ago. Did you guys do yours? I know you already were.
But I think we also, there are organizations that haven't done it, right?
Right.
That wouldn't need to.
Right.
If you went to option two.
But what about the ones who already did?
Right. So, exactly. So...
And the waiting game is the problem right now.
Right.
And I know, because I've had this discussions on the phoning via email about what's the next step. And the next step was, try to collect some data, which we did. We had some folks that kept coming back to questions. We had to go out and send a second email to clarify it more, because there was some confusion. We did that.
Right.
And, or tried to do that. And these are the ones that I have in front of me, and I'll figure out if there's anybody else out there that I, that I have information on that is now listed. And as you can see, it's a, it's somewhat split in some ways. Option one and two kind of lead the group, if you will. Option two is beneficial, because you keep your independence. Now, we want to do that as individual non-for-profits under one umbrella. Fine. Maybe it's individual, because you've already registered, you've already done it. I know you haven't, but let's say you did. Then you keep it, you did your work. Everybody else comes under that umbrella, but both, you know, all seven tax IDs work under the same governing body. You could do that.
Because the, the people who are nonprofit, you do have to pay annual fees, too.
Yeah, potentially. And it depends on how you register yourself.
Right. I know I, I know I do. I have to pay annual fees.
Right. It depends on how much money you raise.
It's minimal, but still...
Some organizations with a non-for-profit, you have to file taxes on a yearly basis, or at least file the exclusion, the exclusion.
I have to pay taxes.
So we'll, we'll bring this back.
Do you, do you guys mind me asking what booster club?
Press country interact.
And you guys are...
Can I just give you, like, we were originally option three, but then we asked some of those clarifying questions, and then we came back and, and once we got that information, we actually moved to option two. And then just from, you know, I, I've also heard from other boosters who have said, "We're going to live it for a year, because it's a concept and it's not materialized." And then they, so that option of being able to roll in...
Kind of grandpa.
Kind of also was, you know, might be, you know...
More powerful to them.
The other thing that I'm thinking, just listening, is that, you know, boosters are a group of people and not everybody participating in boosters. If I were a parent, a non-participating booster parent, and I, you know, somebody decided to be option three, and that I was not then eligible to receive that discounted fee, I as a parent would be really upset about that. So, you know, for example, if you decided option two, and then that cluster remains option three, and they aren't able to get an athletic fee at a reduced cost, some of those families...
I'll tell you, I'll say something. In theory, if there, if there are three, there is nothing that can stop you from saying, "I'm going to start my own booster club, and I'm going to join the big one."
No, right.
You really can't.
Right. No, I understand.
And maybe that would actually, you know, in option three, it might redirect their money, right? So if you have parents who are saying, "Well, why is this?", they'll say, "Well, we fundraised, and here, we're going to sort of offset." And I don't know if that's an option or not, and they can do that, but...
Potentially. I, I think one of the, the biggest questions that I have is, and one of the reasons why I've asked this question about the boosters, which I pretty much didn't have to, I guess, but which has caused all this, is how much do we collect and what do we spend it on? And I want to know sport by sport. And the reason why I want to know is because I'm somewhat taken back by the things that I think we're asking our boosters to do. And I would like to find a way to put a plan in place that if we're going to fundraise, that money is going directly to the needs of students, period. And I believe they are, but I just don't know what that amount is. And I believe that the school committee and the superintendent's office should require that you become a registered non-for-profit status. That was part one. Part two, we had a long discussion about pay-to-play that really kept me, probably the only times I've been up at night, was pay-to-play and how that could really devastate my high school and enrollment and issues. Because the, we have parents who can afford to go up the street to a private school like that, and I don't want them to go. Or they go because they get scholarship, or they go because they're great at a sport, or whatever, whatever the scenario is. And I said, "This is not a culture that I want to be part of. I want to be part of a culture where, as a former high school principal, where, where we have and are part of our athletic program, because it is part of who we are, regardless if a student plays in it or not. They may just be a kid like my kid who just goes to watch it and doesn't participate." Okay? But at the end of the day, what are we expending for? When we say we're raising $3,000 and we spent $2,900 of it, tell me what we spent $2,900 on it. You know, tell me that, that $10,000 of it goes to custodial costs to cover banquets, because I want to put a plan in place to not collect money from boosters to pay a salary. Or what awards are we giving out that we should be giving out? You know, do we pay for all those awards? How do we pay for them? What money do we give? The banquets. Some banquets, I mean, all the banquets, the food is great, don't get me wrong.
That's right.
Because I go to them. But the fact is that the other day...
Clearly.
Clearly. So at the end of the day, at the end of the day, I'll remember that later. At the end of the day, when you, when you look at it, the dynamics of it is, you know, I, it bothers me that, that we have to, why the kids, do the kids pay? Or do the boosters offset the cost and still ask mom and dad for 25 bucks apiece?
Yeah.
Exactly. And it's like, it's like, okay, so, so, right?
And I think as a parent, I don't know if other parents feel this way, but if you have multiple children playing sports over the course of their, of the seasons, I do not need any more cookie dough. I do not need any more sweatshirts. I don't need any more sort of Norton swag stuff. And it's sort of every sport, every season is, I would much prefer to say, "Here, is my money, and it's for all of the kids, and..."
One shot, one shot.
Or, or you have an organization that comes forward at one boosters and says, "We have decent fencing around the football field. Why don't we go out and ask for four-foot signs, charge $500, put the signs up during the season, and that money goes to offset the cost of everything?"
Exactly.
And, and the reason why you want that to be done is because I can go out and...
And I don't even have to buy cookie dough anymore.
Right. Exactly. And, and so maybe now you're collecting $2,500 worth of signs. Gets what? $2,500 we didn't have.
All right. So, because, because we have people, I think, waiting for this decision, I guess, I, I would suggest we get on, on a Janus...
I will. I will. I already wrote it down.
And I think, once, once we decide, and if we do decide that option two is the right option, and, and I'm clearly a proponent of that, if, if there are still people who, once we approve it, if it is to, and we say, "Okay, this is going to be the deadline to vote for this." If people come in, you know, if, if people tell us ahead of time, "I'm a three," we should sit down with them and just say, "Hey, we just make sure, A, you understand how this works, and, and B, possibly, is there some, is there another concern that we don't get?" Because I, I think every concern should be addressed in the option, but there's always blind spots, right? So maybe we're missing something. And, and if there is, tell us, and we can try and address it. If it's simply, "Well, we just want to stay a three, and that's that," then, okay, I mean, more power to you. It's, it's your own call. But, but we should certainly try and, try and make sure that we're on the same page that everybody understands exactly what option two is, that you're not going to get less money.
So I will schedule, I will invite the boosters. I will schedule the meeting for April 9th, because that gives everybody a good chunk of time.
Joe, let's, let's, I, I think, I think we should, we should vote, see where we are, and then only, only sit down with the ones who are not on board, who are three.
So we'll do that...
Speak to only the ones who, who...
So do that at the April meeting? Have a school committee vote on moving forward? And then go back and talk to those that...
I would, yeah. Because, because I think there are people who, at this point, are waiting.
They're waiting. Right.
Okay. That's right, because I go to all these games, and I chew on my lunch, and I go to the banquets, and the food is good.
Yes, it is.
And then, and then, you know, if, hopefully there's a limited number of threes, I think it'll be easier to address just them, sit down in a small room and say, "Okay, what are your concerns?"
Go from there.
And we can address them. Logically, there shouldn't be any reason not to be a two.
And just make sure, maybe, that we kind of just reach out, even if you haven't heard back from other boosters. I know that you...
We will, we'll cross-check the list one more time to make sure that we didn't miss anything, and that everybody's had a voice. We will do that.
Okay. And maybe make it an opt-out as well, and say, "If we don't hear from you here or two." I mean, that is what it is.
All right. Moving on to the next item, school calendars.
Okay, so...
I'm sure we're not going to talk about school calendars.
Forty-seven minutes.
This is not as...
I promise you we're not.
So before you tonight, you have a second read of the calendars for 2018, 2019, as well as 2019 to 2020. As I mentioned before, they are the same format that we've been using the last few years, with staff returning before Labor Day for our Welcome Back Day and our Professional Development Day. We were able to work with the town hall regarding some of the concerns we had around election days, so I believe that's not quite finalized.
Pending, pending, or a select vote.
Pending, or a select vote. So we are presenting you that calendar with, you know, positive thoughts that that will be official very soon. The only other item I wanted to note is that in both years, actually, I'm sorry, in 2019, Good Friday falls during the vacation week, I believe, and then in 2020, it's...
The Friday.
Of April, Friday, April 10th, and it will be a regular school day. And both Dr. Byard and I will be taking a look at attendance this year to give you a recommendation.
Student in-step.
Yes. The only other thing that you might notice is that we typically have an early release day before the holiday break in December, but with Christmas not being until the middle of the following week, we're, it's a regular full day on the, on those Fridays. So if everything's all set, we could take a vote tonight.
December 2019, 20, has an X with a question mark there?
Yeah, there's a little question mark. Mrs. Rand and I went back and forth on that one. However, with the, with Christmas Eve being on Tuesday, the 24th, my recommendation is my recommendation is that the 23rd were closed.
Okay.
So we'll take out that question mark as long as we may. It seems silly to open for a day. But in 2020, 2021, we will probably have school on that day. On the Tuesday. So...
Okay, any questions? Motion to approve?
Second.
Laws in favor?
Thank you.
With our school closed tomorrow, what is the date this year? Do you know?
School's closed tomorrow.
So where are we at?
We are Wednesday, the 20th of June.
It's definitely the Wednesday.
We're originally the 15th, and we're now on day three.
Yes, Wednesday, June 20th.
Can you clarify something for me? I saw this going around, making the rounds. If there's a declared state of emergency, are schools exempt from that?
No. Schools must go to school for 180 days through June 1st. If any emergency... Hold on, through June 30th. However, after June 1st, if you had an emergency day, so let's say a boiler went and so on, you may ask the commissioner for relief. That's the only time. The only other discussion that's up for debate is these Blizzard Bags ideas. So those are something that internally, we've had some discussions about, but we're not there yet. Blizzard Bags are an opportunity for students to do work at home and count the day for students, but then you still have a contractual issue with everybody else.
Well, there's a few different... I mean, you have contractually, you have power, you have internet.
There's a ton of stuff. Ton of stuff.
Mrs. Byrd was nine days without the internet, so...
I can tell you, it's been a wicked attitude to be isolated. I figured out this...
I was so excited, I didn't want that to work.
Yep, you were lying.
She was in the office at midnight.
Yep. Everybody, count to my channel.
All right, next agenda item, administrative assistant.
Administrative assistants met with myself, Link, Jen, to discuss contract. Their representation and their membership is signed off on a three-year agreement. FY '19 at two and a half, and an increase of longevity of $50. FY '20 at 2%, but there's 10 days for five building-level senior administrative assistants and two guidance administrative assistants. They would be working during the July 4th week, so they pick up the July 4th paid holiday. And FY '21, 2% increase, and there's a new step 15. Right now, they're one through 10, I believe.
Ten, yep.
So this would be one through 10, then a 15. There's no 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. It's just on the 15th year at a quarter.
Any questions?
So the 20-quarter, 2-2 is in line with what the teachers are doing, right?
No, that's actually less on the second... In FY '19, the teachers are at 2.25, and there's a 500 to the base. In FY '20, they're at two and a half. And FY '21, there's no contract agreement because their contract is up.
Oh, that's right, because they're off here.
It was around 0.5 this year.
So notionally speaking, the 2019, what is that, two or one?
$18,174.
And the 50 longevity, how much is that? Is from that?
I think it's only $750.
It's not much at all. Yeah, I hate to be kind of niffy, just, you know, we have budget, we're budgeted, and it is very tight. So, and then, I'll just ask again, because our money is super-duper tight. The adding the step 15 in 2021, what do you project that's going to do to us?
The increase is going to be 22,297.
Sorry, saying 22...
22,297.
Twenty-two thousand, 22,297. Okay. And there, it'll compound afterwards, in perpetuity. Okay. Okay, well, I appreciate that. It's not going to absolutely destroy us, but, all right, thank you.
Motion to approve the contract as presented?
So moved. Second.
Laws in favor?
You have a letter to sign. They've already signed the original. You have the other version?
Yeah, they're signed.
Okay, I don't know.
Yep.
All right, next agenda item is a second reading on sections C and D.
All right, it's a fair part of the night. So we met with Jim Hardy from the Mass Association of School Committees last week, and did a final read of section C and D based on the comments that we had at our last meeting. So would you like me to go through those items, or do you just want, I don't know, to tell you that we fixed all of those suggestions? Yes, we fixed all of those suggestions. And the most updated version of C and D are representative of those changes that we made. So unless there's any other questions, this is our second reading of section C and D, and you can vote to accept. Vote to accept? Vote to approve?
Vote to approve.
Approve, but they will not go into effect until we...
You won't vote to accept until...
Vote the entire binder.
Interesting motion to vote to approve sections C and D.
So moved. Second.
Laws in favor? Next part of this is reading of sections E and F.
All right. So I believe you've got two versions of E and F in your packet. So the first E and F...
First time you did that, by the way.
I know, and I didn't realize it until I started going first. Sorry, I apologize. It's my fault. I didn't realize it until I sat down tonight, and I'm like, why do I have so many versions of this?
They didn't do any of this one?
So E is our support services section. So there is one that's marked up a little bit, so that was the one that we've already made, the one that starts in red. So if you have any comments on section E.
Jen, I was just interested in knowing, I saw that you had...
It's not ready.
The vandalism section was taken out?
Can you tell me the code?
Oh, I'm sorry. It is, can I say this, ECAC?
So a lot of the, I'm going to use policies in quotes, that were in this particular section were more procedural, and the district also has a crisis manual that we utilize. Every single staff member has a copy of this crisis manual. It's kept in every single classroom. And a lot of the procedures that were in this particular section are noted as practice in that school crisis manual. So for example, bomb threats, vandalism, intruder in the building. Oh, no, are we sticking notes? So that was why we took out a lot of those, just if there was an emergency, if someone is going to grab that crisis manual versus the big binder.
Well, I was just thinking, we sort of made, you know, sort of local news this year with all of our sort of CD.
Yes.
And this very quickly caught my attention because we had taken it out. So I knew it must be somewhere else. I just wasn't sure, you know, that wasn't sort of a crisis mode situation necessarily.
Because as things change, it's easier to go to that green binder and change them in there, whereas if we wanted to change this, it would have to be a whole thing.
Okay, yes, it would be, you know...
Keep this as big as possible, and then use the other one.
I like that there was a lot of stuff struck. I think that's...
The other reason is that we have within our crisis plan very specific protocols that we do not want published in a policy manual. So, you know, because we want to hold those things available to give us the flexibility that we need, because it's a police matter versus a non-police matter, depending on the age appropriateness of the student, for example. You know, what we do with a kindergarten is going to be very different with vandalism with a temptrader. They're just going to be looked upon differently because of the age of the child. So that's why you see a lot of the red.
I mean, it was totally, ask them this, ask them that, I mean, what?
It was very procedural, and we wanted to have the ability to change those things.
Because there were a lot of areas that were taken out, which is fine. It definitely just caught my attention.
One of the ones that, like for us, EE, it used to be EER, but the I just got slashed, is school bus transportation policy and guidelines. So what we did is we kept the policy as a statement, but everything after that is responsibility of the school committee, responsibility of the driver, responsibility, those are all procedural. They belong somewhere else. So now that's gone from literally four pages, five pages, down to one, because the procedures are in our crisis plan where they belong, which you've approved, by the way, three years ago now.
Okay, start with us. I was wondering what I think, right? Where you want to go there?
It's tough.
That's it?
Yeah. We can always bring it back to...
The number three is three years ago.
Yep. You still, even in section E?
Yeah, I apologize ahead of time for something like this. If anybody wants to leave, I might take a time. All right, in EBB, wait, can I interrupt? EEB?
First aid?
Yeah. In the first line, the second sentence, if an accident or sudden illness occurs, we just say, if an accident or sudden illness occurs, school personnel will administer first aid. I'm thinking we should have, like, appropriate training, some qualifier on that.
Well, down below does talk about the school or nurse or another trained person will be responsible for administering first aid?
We'll get to that. We'll get to that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody slips some files in the cafeteria, is everybody supposed to hands-off and not do anything?
So here's why, and I actually do have some experience with this. First aid, you don't necessarily want somebody administering first aid because they washed Grey's Anatomy last night. There are actually things, and this is, I mean, I joke, but there are things where you can actually do harm while you think you're doing the right thing.
Correct, right.
So, you know, somebody falls down and is having a seizure. If you don't know what you're supposed to do, you could very easily do something you don't want to do, something you're going to hurt the person. So I get, yeah, if somebody falls, you know, I hurt my leg, yeah, you definitely help them off.
So the protocol under first aid would be that if you see somebody all of a sudden who's falling, you're actually supposed to contact emergency personnel first and foremost, right? Your job is to actually, literally, it's kind of, you're supposed to tell somebody, or yourself down, and say, somebody's down there bleeding from their head and they passed out. And typically, what happens next is nobody's supposed to move anybody because of that protocol. So, I mean, I guess we could put something in here that says...
I'm okay if we don't.
Yeah, okay. What's the problem with this below? Because you said that that's connected to the decision.
It is our problem. My second question is, do we have a school physician?
Yes. As a matter of fact, starting next year, you're going to be voting on it, because one of the things we have in common is this, is voting on your school physician.
Who is it?
Good question.
All right. We don't know their name.
We pay him a thousand bucks a year.
Yeah. He's out of Foxworth, if I remember correctly.
Okay. All right. So it's actually not somebody in-house?
No, it's an actual physician that our nurses can utilize for the purposes of...
Not in-house, I guess not somebody in-house.
No, it's not housed here. It's similar to, like, an EMT company, they have a medical director. It's a similar situation.
All right. EBC? The second paragraph, superintendent will develop and maintain plans that meet the requirements of state law for preparedness. This is just kind of a thought, but given the environment right now, I think it might make some sense to include federal in that, because it seems to me that that is going to be coming sooner rather than later.
Well, not only that, I would probably say that in terms of that requirement of state law, federal guidelines under some of our grants, I think, could also be part of this. So I think sticking the word federal government...
Federal and state would make sense. And in the third, the third paragraph, superintendent should develop in consultation with school nurses, et cetera, et cetera. More of a question, I guess. We don't include principals in that? Is there a reason we don't include principals in that?
No, we do. And actually, the emergency medical response plan comes from the principals.
Okay.
It's a good point. So, yeah, so it should say, principals, school nurses, in consultation with principals, school nurses.
Okay. And then down in number seven, AEDs?
Yep.
In the event the school possesses AEDs, location of all available AEDs, whether the location is fixed or portable, I'm not sure what that means. AEDs are by definition portable.
Right, but they're fixed to our building, so they're on the wall.
Sometimes the case, you can take off and run with the case. Other times, you have to open it up, take the machine out, and just take the machine.
Okay, but isn't that location still a specific location that's a fixed location?
Well, it's fixed because everybody knows that it's here versus you have to go get it, let's say, the nurses on it.
In the middle school, JCS with it.
Okay.
We have hallways that are recognized as AED hallways.
Okay, gotcha. All right. EBCD?
Emergency closings?
Yeah. This one's an easy one. Second line.
Yeah.
Whether or other, houses, weather, or other emergencies that threaten the health, it should be or safety, not above safety.
Thank you.
ECA?
Buildings and ground security?
Yeah. One, two, three, fourth section down. Funds and valuable records will be kept in a safe place, and it should just be safe and secure, not under lock and key. That sounds really homespun to me.
Which one?
Safe and secure.
Lock and key. It's an odd phrasing.
So you're just taking...
Safe and secure.
Okay. Yeah, most of them are locked. Not all, but most of them.
ECB, maintenance of school facilities. This is one, it's just a personal thing, but first, the first line, sufficient number of school houses, or are we saying school houses? It appears multiple times in the...
School buildings.
Yeah, okay.
More words meant that.
All right.
I probably did think we thought it was...
Well, back when the days, when there were eight school houses, back in, way back, random, back in the early 20th century.
All right, same page, the third line. Maintenance and repair of school facilities, buildings, and sites is a direct responsibility of school committee?
Of the school committee.
Say the school department.
Yeah, it shouldn't be, I don't think it should be school committee.
Does this get this ranch?
And not only do I not think it, but it's...
We didn't tell you that when you were elected?
Supervision over the care and safety of your properties by school department will be the general responsibility of superintendent and director of facilities. So it actually conflicts with something prior in the...
So change it to director responsible with superintendent, directors.
And director of facilities, yeah.
Responsibility of superintendent and...
Director of facilities.
Okay.
I have one here, we'll skip that one.
Excellent. Yep, exactly how I feel. Time out.
EEE, and it has an E, and it has an R in red.
Oh, yeah, the school bus transportation.
School's transportation policy. Okay. Line two, I would strike also, just make it, any pupil may be required to walk distance one mile. In three. Why did I circle that?
Well, staff is a little too general.
That's what you know, I have staff circled, I don't remember why, but, yeah, maybe take staff out. Maybe superintendent and...
I would say, what does it need?
Yeah. Shall make whatever rules and regulations, it should be an R between regulations and deemed, are deemed necessary.
Good catch.
Now, here's, so four, five, and six. Originally, I was thinking to start it with the two, doesn't make sense, because it's not a cold and bullet point list. But I'm actually thinking that we should take all of those out. And here's why. I don't want to go too deep into the weeds, but these all talk about what we're going to provide for bus transportation systems. I think we should have something more akin to, superintendent may institute a transportation system beyond what is required by law, as long as it is run safely, efficiently, and economically, blah, blah, blah. Like, basically, we'll leave it at that. Because I think we've had discussions about how we want our transportation. I don't want pigeonhole us into, hey, this is your policy, and this is what you need to do.
All right, so read it as one instead of four, five, six.
Yeah, exactly. And that should essentially encompass all of that, right?
Yep.
Matter of fact, that six one, I'm not even sure what that six one means, to be honest with you.
So we're saying, we're deleting four, five, and six, instead, putting in the superintendent may institute a transportation policy over their...
The superintendent may institute a transportation system
System.
beyond what is required by law, as long as it is run safely, efficiently, and economically. So it shows discretion to run one or not have one.
Exactly what we do.
EEAEA. Again, that's EEAEA. Bus driver examination and training. Number four, the contractor will furnish, it should be the superintendent or is designated, I think, not the school committee.
Yeah, and while you're there, the school committee will reserve the right to approve or disapprove of persons employed. That is not your purview, mine, number one.
I didn't see that. Wow.
So that is not the school committee's responsibility, it's the superintendent's responsibility. As a matter of fact, I do approve and disapprove of drivers.
Good thing you're there. I know. You know what? We'll take a moment while I reread the whole thing.
We'll be right back with you.
Okay. EEAEC.
Student conduct on school buses?
Yeah. Student conduct on school buses, school committee and staff share with students and parents responsible for student safety, blah, blah, blah. We, I think we already struck these rules. So the rules themselves were struck. The authority for enforcing school committee requirements of student conduct on buses will rest with the principals. We're referring to requirements that we already struck.
Well, we struck them here, but they're still in the procedure manual. So they still have to be followed, just because they're not listed here. They're listed somewhere else.
But they're not our, they're not our requirements anymore. They're...
Procedurally on outside.
They're not ours. So it's not a school committee policy, it falls to you guys. Do we agree on that?
So...
Well, so I would say that in order for me to follow those procedures that we've established, we're following a statement of policy that you've established. So in other words, because it's, so now I can go, our procedures come from our handbook, from our manual on policy, because the school committee has provided me the authority to do so. That's what policy is.
I'll let it go, but that's not what it reads, but I'll let it go.
So if you... So where it says, the authority for enforcing school committee requirements, what if we had said, the authority for enforcing district requirements of student contact on buses will rest with the principal? It's a district where you could say handbook requirements of student conduct.
So what I'm saying is, the authority for enforcing school committee requirements of student contact on buses will rest with the principal. What I'm saying is, the principal, superintendent, somebody else put those requirements in place, not us.
Right, so we change the word school committee and replace that with the appropriate language. District where you could say handbook.
But if our procedures are in our student handbook, which they are for transportation, you do vote those.
If we want to go with school committee, these are just suggestions, that's all. If you want to stick with it, we'll look at it. Listen, next go around, I'll put the same thing in there.
Okay.
Next time you have to vote, pick Wesley.
This hasn't been done till 2000, so I'm glad he's doing it. After reading them twice, this is my third or fourth read with this.
Actually, you know what? I'll take a moment off to say thank you to the people for this week, because it is, it's a pain in the butt.
It's a tease.
It's a pain in the butt, and honestly, you did it now.
Eighteen years ago.
I love that you struck a lot of stuff, the job.
I called it. I had an hour phone call.
Yeah. Because I'll tell you something, I started reading the original one, and I was wondering, I'm like, what is this doing here? What is this one here? And then I was like, finally, after about an hour, I realized, okay, it's not the right one. And I looked, I'm like, oh, yeah, she struck all that stuff.
It's my punishment.
EEAJ. Motor vehicle idling on school grounds.
Yeah.
This is mass law, I'm assuming?
Correct. We have no purview on this one.
Take it out. Because why are we just reiterating?
Because the state law requires a policy of the school committee.
Oh, God.
That's all it is. You have been forced by law to have this policy in your meeting.
I'm literally, I will tell you for the record, for the record, I'm embarrassed to have this in here. It's ridiculous to have it. It doesn't make any sense.
Well, somebody was connected to somebody, that's how we got it. Actually, you know what this is? Jim told us. This is actually, has nothing to do with most of us in this room, because we're in a suburb. This has to do with the buses that are outside of an elementary school in the inner city, of which the fumes just go right up into people's apartments and condos.
It's mass law. If we don't stay in there, you can't go faster than 55 on the railroad minutes.
We should.
EFD, meal charge policy. This is my last one, by the way.
Good.
Of this section.
Well, F is really short.
I don't see any other stickies on his F papers, though.
Keep going.
I'll give you a next one.
We're ADHD's happy in here.
I don't have it, I have the next one.
See? I've been looking.
In the second... The second paragraph. The provisions of this policy pertain to regular price school meals only. It should be, the district will provide a regular meal, not the school committee. You don't want me cooking.
Could use you on some days. Pay 12.50 an hour.
So section F is our facilities development section, and then that actually got smaller while we went through as well. It's hard to believe, but it's only like six pages.